We're going to call this meeting in order to make note that everybody is here. That's always a good sign. The first thing we're going to do, though, we're going to jump to a police department swearing in ceremony and recognition of Corporal Burns' promotion. So, let me hop down there. You guys come in. All right. So pursuant to Section 551.071 and 551.072 and 551.074, you're going to move the City Council into executive session. And we shall meet, well, we'll turn as quickly as possible.
Mayor, if I may make a motion before we go into an executive session, it's recently come to my attention that during executive sessions, we are not taking sufficient minutes of the meeting.
We can't take a motion unless it's on the agenda. I think that would be something we should discuss.
So.
Excuse me. Whoever is speaking out, please cease speaking out. This meeting is going to run pretty sharply because we got a lot of people wishing to speak. If necessary, we will escort you out if you will not stop. Let's have that discussion in executive session.
It is on the, it is on the agenda that we are to speak about the procedure of executive session.
Executive session.
Well, I'm making the motion now because motions can't be made in executive session.
No, we make the motion when we come out of executive session. Thank you.
Can she, can she finish asking exactly what she's wanting to do? And then we can get the attorney.
We need to have the discussion. It's in the, it's on executive session.
Let's let her finish what she's asking. That's what I'm, that's what I'd like to call the question on.
I think we can do.
And then get Drew to make him, make a decision on what she's asking.
I agree. I mean, if, if we are to be taking minutes during executive sessions so that.
Drew, do we take minutes in executive session? We do not.
You do not have to take minutes for consultation with attorney. You do have to keep certified record of the others.
We keep a certified record aside.
And again, the certified record is not sufficient because it only lists what's on the agenda. It does not list any.
Is, I'll tell you real quickly, we can go back to what we used to do and take the meetings.
A recording would be sufficient.
Okay. All right, we're going to reconvene into regular session. First announcement of executive sessions that we'll be having a special meeting on June 22 at 7:00 p.m. We'll be posting agenda for that. Hopefully tomorrow, we'll get together with City Secretary and get that posted. Next is the invocation. I think Councilman Mitchell will lead us in the invocation. And please stand afterwards for the pledges.
Father, we come to you tonight and we just want to praise you. We want to thank you, Lord. We want to give you the glory, Father, but most of all, we want to, we want you to just to help us to come as one. One council with one body, for our citizens and for the city and the staff. Father, we ask you to watch over us as we preside this meeting today. Father, we welcome you here to be the part of what we need you to be, Lord. So today, Father, as we go forth, we want to make it all about the city, the citizens, transparency, when we seek your knowledge, we seek your wisdom and your understanding, Lord, to guide us and give us the direction in which we need to go for the city. Father, we thank you and we praise you in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you please, during standing, we'll do the pledges to the American flag pros. I pledge allegiance. Now the Texas flag. You're good. Okay, so if you'll bear with me for a little bit, we're going to change a few things up real quickly. Nothing major, so don't worry. I'm going to jump all around this agenda. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to move to item F, appointment of a mayor pro tem. Mayor pro tem fills in if the mayor is not here or if he dies or resigns or all of the above. Are you having trouble hearing me? Really? Well, I mean, you should be blessed by that. Okay. How's that? Is that better? All right. Okay, so again, we're going to be going a little bit out of order. There are a couple of things we have to, we've got some house cleaning we got to do. So we'll come back to everything, don't worry, but I'm going to go down to item number F1. Consider appointment of a mayor pro tem who takes over if the mayor's not here or if the mayor dies or resigns or all of the above. So Mayor Pro Tem is usually left for the most senior member of the council. That's sort of a little bit difficult here. So open the floor to a nomination for Mayor Pro Tem. I'm opening the floor from the council for nomination for Mayor Pro Tem.
Trying to push.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Gary Mitchell as Mayor Pro Tem.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Well, here you are not getting railroaded. All right, that motion fails for the lack of a second and not any reflection on you, Gary. Do I have another nomination?
Yes, I would like to nominate Linda Rhodes, the most senior council member.
Wow, revenge. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all those in, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
You better not die or resign.
All those in favor, please enter your votes. Drumroll says. Motion passes 401. Congratulations on Mayor Pro Tem, Linda Rhodes. All right, so Linda, I'm going to step out for a few minutes. What you'll need to pick up here is the citizen visitor forum. We have a lot of people wanting to speak on item F5 and then on to reports and announcement and the consent agenda.
Hey Brian, can I, can I just ask you something real quick?
You just did.
Would it be, thank you, thank you for saying yes. Would it be appropriate for us to move our work sessions and go ahead? Because there's a few people here that are still here for the work. So can we postpone those?
I'm skipping the work session altogether and going right.
Okay, so we can release them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone will be here.
If you were here for the work session.
Someone will be here to speak on some of the items that are on the agenda. But yeah.
But if we're, if we're postponing that, then the items on the agenda would be postponed as well.
Not necessarily. If we just skip the work session, they can discuss that during the work session.
Well, I'm saying let's, let's skip the work session and let's also postpone the, those parts that are on individual consideration as well.
Can you narrow that down for me?
Like F2 and F4.
Drew, can we go ahead and make those jumps? If, if Jen, you want to make a motion to postpone to a future council meeting, F4?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone items F2 and F4.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please enter your votes. And remind me when we get back, when I get back, that I don't go and try to cover those. And I don't forget and try to cover those.
So my item says consider appointment of a mayor pro tem.
Oh yeah, it's still up there. Yeah, so we just have a motion, just, I guess, raise your hand. We'll do it that way and record the hand raised. All those in favor of postponing F2 and F4, please raise your hand. All those opposed, I see none. Motion passed unanimously. Linda, take over for this and.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to move forward to the visitor and citizen forum. City Secretary, do we have any wishing to speak? Okay. Okay, the forms being submitted here all are for item number F5. Is there anyone else present that did not get their form up to the City Secretary? Okay, well, we have no visitors wishing to speak. So we're going to move on to the report section. And we've already addressed item number one for the Police Department swearing in ceremony and recognition of Corporal Burns' promotion. So we're going to move on to updates for the City Council. Councilmember Jan Joplin, would you like to start?
First of all, I want to thank you for being here. I know it's a lot when we go into executive session for a long time, but there's a lot to discuss. But as a citizens, I want to thank you for being here. And also, I don't know where the camera is, but to all you in Zoom land, I want to thank you for joining us as well. And I would just say that in my corporate world, what we have now is a council management change, chosen by the citizens with a mandate for change. With the four new council that are voted on since November, hopefully there's some reflection on why and some cooperation with new directives. That's the goal. I wanted to let you know I attended a really good KISD Future Development Meeting. And I would love to invite them here to show counsel what was presented that night. There are, just a brief recap. Basically, it was because pre-K is going to be full days and all the new developments. They need to reassess student enrollment. But the presentation was 13 new developments. And of those eight new developments, being in Kennedale within the next year, equated to 685 units. That's a lot of new homes coming into Kennedale within the next year. The majority of them are apartments, small homes, townhomes for the most part. So what they are doing is they have a committee that's working on a plan that'll be presented to KISD. And I think it towards the end of the summer. But what I would like to ask is if we could have that full presentation brought in here. Because they also had, they included someone from Arlington and I had their cards but lost it. They gave us an update on Sublet Road, which was really good to hear. They're how they're going to move that north and the timeframe that that's going to be done in. Because I know everyone wants Sublet Road. You know what I'm talking about? The bad part where you don't even drive at night because you're afraid you might hit someone. And it looks like that may be done within a year, I'm thinking from memory. But if we had them here to present, then you could all see it. They also had someone there talking about the 820 and 287 interchange as well, which was interesting. And then last but not least, just July 4th is around the corner. And just have fun, be safe, and just remember there's no fireworks allowed in the city of Kennedale.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Gary Mitchell?
I too would like to thank everyone for coming because I know we're all have busy schedules, correct? I wanted to say a special thank you to the meeting last night for all the people that showed up here and voiced their opinion. Because it's your city, you pay the taxes. And it's our responsibility to listen. And so far, there hasn't been a lot of that, I think. So we want to represent you. We want to be your voice. And so by you coming and signing up and speaking and letting us know, we just want you to know that we hear you and we thank you for coming. And I hope that there's some good resolution comes out tonight for you. God bless you and thank you for coming.
Okay, and Councilmember Julie Jacobson?
Thank you. I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Mitchell said. Thank you all so much for being here and helping to represent your neighborhood and your city. Thank you.
And Councilmember James Connor?
Well, this is my first day, so thank you to the citizens of Kennedale. Thank you so much for your vote. Thank you so much for your belief in me. I hope to do great things up here and see positive change in Kennedale. To all the people that came out last night, your voices are being heard. I will make sure of that. That's the platform I ran on and that's a platform I intend to keep. Thank you.
Okay, and I have nothing new to report. And we're going to move on to item number D5 for the financial reports for the city and the EDC. If the Finance Director, Laquita, could please come forth?
Good evening. Is that better? Okay. Within your packets, you have the financial reports from April for the EDC as well as for May for the city. I don't have any particular highlights for any of those, either of those. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Hopefully, they were easy read for you. And just a quick glance at the summary page for the city financials will kind of tell you where, where we are on revenue and expenditures. We're about 67% into the fiscal year at the end of May. So we're tracking well with our general fund revenues and expenditures. And you have detail there for all other major funds and all special funds. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. I just have one question. Sorry to interrupt. It's not really a question, but just want to ask your input on the revenue. Looks like it's up for the general fund overall. If we're at 67%, it's at 89.6. And so when I dig back into the detail, it looks like it's mainly driven by property taxes. And is that just because of the way that falls? That's very typical?
Yes, that's typical and that's normal. So if you look at where we are on property taxes this year versus this time last year, we're just a little bit behind. A big reason for that is because we did a budget amendment where we raised the number that we thought we would receive for this fiscal year. But yeah, that's very normal. We would have actually received the majority of property tax receipts in the January, February timeframe. And since that carries the majority of the revenue, it's a little bit higher, so.
I kind of have four questions, actually. I did a little digging into the EDC reports during my runoff. The EDC report at the end of March has a miscellaneous, yeah, has a miscellaneous income budgeted at 30,000. What goes into this figure? Is it? What is it? Red's Roadhouse rent, Arlington Chamber of Commerce rent? What else?
That's it, actually. The budgeted amount. Those are, those are the two things.
On that same report, the prior year's budgeted number for that item is $120 higher. Is that the Arlington Chamber of Commerce rent? So for the current fiscal year, was the projected rent from the chamber zero?
We have not received rent from the chamber. I couldn't tell you exactly when the last time was that we received it. So at, at this time, it's not projected.
Third question, on the EDC report, from the end of April, back to the miscellaneous income field, the prior year's April 20 field is $464, which would seem to indicate that we didn't receive the $2,500 from Red's Roadhouse. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay. And at the end of, on this end of April report, the land proceeds is zero. Does this indicate that either the 6820 Oakcrest Drive deal or the 600 West Parkway, West Kennedale Parkway deal have gone through? Is a status available for these two projects available?
Well, it would just indicate that, yeah, those deals would not have closed now. So we wouldn't have received any revenue at the time of this report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other council member? No? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, consent agenda. The item number five, authorize the city manager to prepare bidding documents and publish notice for the sale of 5412 Kennedale Street. Believe that one we are pulling as discussed in executive session. And is, are there any other items on the consent agenda that any council member wishes to pull off and consider separately?
Yes, I'd like to pull two. The approval of the minutes for May 18th. I have an addition that I'd like Leslie to add.
Anyone else?
It was my understanding we were also going to pull three, the extension of the contract for the annual audit. No? Did we miss it? Okay.
I think it was pull four. Pull four.
Okay, I, I don't recall the audit, but do you wish to pull the audit item from the consent agenda? To discuss separately?
Oh, no, I apologize. It was my under.
The postponing? Yeah, so you'd pull this one, pull E4.
Okay.
And five. Yeah.
Okay, so two, four, and five. Okay, can I have a motion then of that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pull the consent agenda item E2, which is the minutes, and four and five, which were executive session items that were postponed. So we'd be postponing these on the consent agenda as well.
Okay, I'll second that. Call for a vote, please.
I think this is.
Just to confirm, the motion is to remove items two, four, and five from the consent agenda.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, just to pull them.
So. It will just say that you are voting on the consent agenda, but I've put in to postpone those items for separate consideration into the notes.
For separate consideration, that is true. Everyone vote, please. Oh, sorry. Okay, now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item as it remains, which would be items number one and three?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary Mitchell. Do I have a second? Did you get which one? Jan Joplin. Okay, thank you. Okay, and then? Any further discussion? We can call for a vote. Motion approved. Okay. On the, hold just one moment, please.
Excuse me, sorry, Gary did not enter a vote.
Oh.
You can't hear me.
That's the second, that's the second move.
Okay, thank you. Now we are going to consider what's on the consent agenda item number two, approval of the minutes from the May 18, 2021 regular meeting. Ms. Joplin?
I'd like to have Leslie to add during the council meeting, just to the minutes, specifically to the six, where it pertains to the $6 million bond, that I asked for a delay. Also add when the city manager said that the council had directed staff to move forward with the issuance this year, that I stated not the current council. So I can give Leslie this copy that she could edit.
Okay, can I have that in the form of a motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add, ask for delay of the $6 million bond to the minutes. And I can look at the minutes. It was specifically to work session item two. And then also in the comments from George Campbell, after he states the council had directed staff to move forward with the $6 million that I stated not the current council.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please.
To confirm, is this a motion to approve the amended minutes as discussed or just to amend the minutes?
To approve the, yes, to approve the.
Approve the amended version? Okay.
Okay, motion passes. Now consent agenda item number four, authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute a lease agreement with Etron Inc. for the lease of two oh one West Kennedale Parkway, building one in Town Center. Councilmember Joplin?
I think this was asked to be pulled, just for us to have conversation. Okay. Okay, so I think that we were going to, but we don't have to discuss this, right, in executive session? Correct? Okay. So the consent agenda is for the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute, thank you, a lease agreement with Etron Incorporated for the lease of two oh one West Kennedale Parkway, which is in Town Center, building one. And we have all the information in regards to the, to the contract, to what was presented to the EDC. So this was presented to the EDC, and now it's coming to us for our input on it. So I would open it up to anyone that has input on this that's been familiar with it.
So I was able to review this contract. I have several concerns, both. I'm sorry, sir, are you? Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll recognize you. Would you want to go ahead and move forward with your statement? And then?
Whichever you feel is more appropriate.
Okay.
I should continue?
Yes, thank you.
So obviously, with the Etron contract here in Town Center, there are some advantages, particularly that if we are to rent out that space, it makes it appear that Town Center is being successful, that there are lots of businesses there. Obviously, that's something that city council and the city would desire moving forward. And we would hope that that would create some revenue for the city also going forward. And that would specifically be for the EDC, not necessarily for the city of Kennedale proper. However, there are some disadvantages to this contract in which the contract is not optimal for the city of Kennedale, pardon me. Specifically, the language in the contract is not clear. The contract specifies a monthly rental fee, but lists the yearly fee. This contract was approved by EDC before the EDC had actually read it. And so at the time of the vote during the EDC, the actual rent was unknown. The EDC had been informed by the city manager that it would be free rent for about four months, but it turns out that it's going to be six months of free rent for the Etron. However, EDC moved ahead because the city manager had told us that it was a time-sensitive matter. But the EDC did not authorize execution of the contract merely for the negotiation of it. So six months of free rent for any company in Kennedale is rather excessive. The rental fee is excessively low compared to other properties. So, for example, a typical range of a dollars per square foot per month would be seventy-five cents to a dollar twenty-five per square foot per month. A low range would be less than seventy-five cents per square foot per month. And the property that is proposed to be rented here will be at thirty-seven cents per square foot per month, which is half of what even the low range is. And so I would recommend that we disapprove this contract and authorize the city manager to move forward with a more reasonable rent amount.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and recognize the other council members. That way you can address their concerns all at one time. Any other council person?
I would just agree that right now, I do understand that getting someone in Town Center is important to support Town Center. But I don't think that we have to give them free. I think we could go back and renegotiate and get a better deal for the EDC.
Okay. Anyone else?
I too have a couple of concerns about this as well. The rent, to echo Ms. Jacobson, is excessively low. Eight thousand two hundred sixty square feet, I think it said. Yeah. And three K. I don't know who lives in an apartment these days, but a six hundred and fifty square foot apartment goes for a rent of about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a month. Eight thousand two hundred sixty square feet for three K or around there? That's very low. Also, the EDC nor the city should be responsible for removing the sign from the previous tenant. In addition to installing curb ramps as well for deliveries. I believe that the tenant who is moving into that location should be responsible for that, not the city or the EDC. I also recommend a disapproval on this.
Councilmember Mitchell, do you have any comments?
My concern would be, as he read that, or as I read it earlier, it said, let me pull it up real quick. So it's F four. Talking about a pallet jack. So I know what a pallet jack does. So what, this would be a question to you, I'm supposing. So what type of trucks and how often would you be parking there to unload the truck and use a pallet jack? Because that's already a very congested area.
If you could please state your name clearly for the record. Thank you. We're being recorded.
Sorry, Craig Hughes, Hughes Commercial Real Estate and Development. So first of all, I'm not sure where the six months come from. That was what the tenant requested, the prospective tenant requested. What we've agreed to and what the final lease is, is four months, but it's not complete free rent. So there's two components to rent. There's base rent, and then there's the triple net operating expenses. So right now, with a vacancy, Kennedale Economic Development Corporation is basically eating twenty-five percent of the operating expenses of the building. So by leasing it to the tenant, the tenant, as it's written now, for the first four months will pay the triple net operating expenses, which is eight hundred and sixty dollars. And that's only for four months. And then on the fifth month, the rent goes up to just under four thousand a month, which is in line with what Dollar General is paying, with what City Electric Supply is paying, and what the antique mall is paying. For Councilmember Mitchell, this is a computer and electronics wholesale mostly. It is, they do about, project to do about two million dollars this year on Amazon, which collects taxes, or sales taxes, rather, which will be remitted to the city in that two percent. That's about forty thousand dollars of additional sales tax revenue that this will generate. Plus, they're looking to open up a retail component. The retail component will be in addition to that. What they do, they receive, there's box trucks that will come up usually in the morning once a day, and they'll deliver several, they'll have a Jerry lift that lifts it down. They'll put it on a pallet jack, and they'll take it into their front door because there's no else way to get in there. So the five thousand, forty-nine hundred dollars estimate for the, or bid, actually, for the ramp is so that they can pallet jack in generally once a day in the morning.
That was my concern because, you know, the Dollar Store right next door and people in and out all the time over there, and there's not much parking anyway. So we take a big truck, I mean, a box truck's a little bit different, but that was a concern for me.
It's a fifteen-foot box truck generally.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And, you know, and just, you know, the previous tenant, unfortunately, the Vfit martial arts never seemed to make it, and they went way too long, in my opinion. We were really, would have liked to get them out of the way, you know, terminate their lease for default. In my opinion, we let them go a little way too long, but this will backfill that space and, you know, provide about eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year in revenue. And I would argue that that's market rate revenue. Now, our newer buildings, excuse me, those, you know, where this is six or seven dollars gross, our newer buildings were Dicky's, and those, now that's a different type of product. And, you know, our rental rates up there are seventeen or eighteen dollars a foot. But this is big bulk retail space. It's a nineteen seventy building. And, you know, it's a different type of retail product. And, you know, it's, this is a tough market. I mean, we built that building six in between Dicky's and the subway building. It's been vacant for four years. Our community med space has been vacant for five years. It's a very difficult market, Kennedale Town Center. It's a very tough market. And we have eighteen thousand cars a day go by Kennedale Parkway, and they don't want to stop. It's a very difficult, we're bleeding money right and left on that building six. Me and five buildings just sitting there empty. There's just not a lot of activity.
With that being said, thank you for saying those words. Nineteen seventies building, you know, it does qualify for, you know, a little bit of a reduced rent because of the amenities that may have to be upgraded. So I would agree with that then. I didn't know it was that old.
Yeah.
However, my problem is, is that the city nor the EDC should have to pay for removal of the sign and the curb ramp.
So the tenant that we had to lock out for default, it would have been their responsibility. They left us high and dry. They left owing fifty thousand dollars in rent.
Successive.
They're not, they're not going to pay for it. And it's not the obligation of the new tenant to remove something that should have been removed by the prior tenant.
Agreed.
One other comment, so the new tenant wants to replace all the old fifty-year-old lighting with new LED at their own expense. So they're going to be investing approximately twenty thousand dollars inside the building to upgrade that building.
And you did say earlier that it's currently online through Amazon, but they're opening maybe a retail sector?
Yes, sir.
When do you think that would be established? Or when do they?
Well, till I won. Well, within the first three months, you know, three or four months, immediately, basically, as quick as they can get it built out. So what they want to do, it's a wide open space.
It is.
What they want to do is create a retail presence at the beginning. And he told me that they got a bid for twenty thousand dollars, which he thought was a little excessive. But he's trying to, you know, value engineer that down, get it down. But what they want to do is create a retail presence, block off the back part of it, and, you know, hopefully have retail traffic coming through here, which is desperately needed.
It is desperately needed. I agree with you. Our businesses in Kennedale need to have more, you know, more exposure.
You know, we've been part of Kennedale Town Center since twenty fifteen, I guess, six years now. And, you know, it's a tough market, and I would urge the council to consider this lease.
I certainly like the fact that they've got the Amazon sales, two million dollars a year. We're looking for revenue streams to come into Kennedale other than taxing people out of their homes. So this is certainly something that we need to consider, as far as I'm concerned. Yeah.
Craig, do you know what the, just estimate what the curb ramp would cost?
It's, yes, ma'am, we've got one bid, and I tend to get a couple more, just as a play starter. It was forty, I've actually, it's forty-nine hundred, I believe. Hold on.
Thought you were going to say forty-nine thousand.
No, no, no. We've got a bid, tax, title, and license, four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, five thousand bucks.
Okay. And to remove the Vfit sign, do you have an idea?
I'm estimating a thousand bucks, but I think we can do it cheaper than that. And then, so normally, when, normally, when a new tenant comes in, the landlord has to deliver all plumbing, electrical, and lighting systems in good working order and repair. That's just a typical lease that the landlord gives up to them in good working order and repair. If it goes out during the term of the lease, it's their expense to replace the lights or what have you. We were going to do that, and that's when he informed me, he's like, look, we don't want those antique fifty-year-old lights. First of all, you can't find bulbs for them. I mean, when we put Vfit in there, we, that building had been vacant for seven years. Seventy-five percent of that building was vacant for seven years. We had a little temporary, we had that Montgomery, the soap guys in there on a temporary lease. So, you know, we slowly started from Dollar General was the original tenant. We put the Vfit guys in there with very, very little money. Just basically gave it to them. It's, I mean, it's, those bulbs are almost impossible to find. They're so old. It's a pretty rough space.
Craig, could I just make a suggestion? I can see where there's, so on one page, it does say, or page two, you can see right here.
Where it shows six months zero. I think that's where the conclusion is.
So that is an older version, unfortunately. So we, in order to, said he's not willing, he was not willing to do six months. And then he, we went back and told him, you know, the most would be four. So again, on, so-
So on the top page, it says four. But on this page, as you dig into it, it says the one to six.
So council has been provided with an older version of the contract? Is that what I'm hearing?
There were three edits.
See where it says it's top.
Yeah, so that was a mistake that I made when we went back. So I've now got it on the board. We just need to have this updated.
Yes, ma'am.
And also what the rent actually is. It's not actually zero. It's actually eight twenty-five. So again, this is a triple net.
Okay.
So there's the base rent component, which is, or the base rent, zero for four months.
Okay.
But if you look on page three.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. On page one.
Yeah.
One point one one.
Standard form.
So there are nineteen, this place, nineteen percent of the building. One point one one. So in addition to base rent, they also pay eight hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-sixty.
Gotcha.
So that's like the escrow that you pay on your mortgage.
If the property taxes go up, that's an estimate. And then at the end of the year, if property taxes went up, then there's a true up. They have to pay additional amount. So if the landscaper went up or whatever, that's just an estimate that they pay into escrow.
I think it would, just going forward, be helpful if there was maybe another box over here. You know, so when we're looking at this, there's, we have a lot of things to read through.
Right.
So that we could see it's actually not zero, just so it stands out to us, and we're not having to look through to see if there's something else we're missing.
Sure, yeah, that's a-
I mean, just-
That's a nuance of a triple net lease that-
Yeah.
Real estate.
And I don't know about triple net leases, so thank you for helping me to see where that is and to explain that.
I do have another question, Jan, if you're done.
Yes, ma'am.
So just to be clear, this is suite one eleven that Etron wants to rent, and EDC owns that, correct?
They own the entire building.
And then when you were talking about building seven, who owns building seven?
My partners and I. So building seven is the Dicky's building. The empty building is building six.
Okay.
And then the subway building is building five. And then there's four pad sites. There's the one next to subway. That's suited for a fast food restaurant. We're looking for a fast, drive-through, fast food restaurant, hopefully, you know, an AT&T or something like that.
So your company owns building six and seven?
And five.
And five, okay. And so I think you told us earlier that your properties are renting for seventeen or eighteen, pardon me, seventeen or eighteen dollars per square foot per year. Is that correct?
Correct.
However, you're advocating for the EDC to rent this property for four dollars and fifty cents per square foot per year?
That's, that's correct.
Why would there be such a discrepancy between what you would propose is best for the EDC versus what you propose- versus what you propose is best for your company?
It's, it's different kind of, it's bulk retail versus smaller bay retails. So in order for us to finish out, so the, the cost to get into this lease is six or seven thousand dollars in tenant improvements. For me to lease one, one thousand feet, it's going to cost a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to finish that new building out. That's in addition to what we, a million five that we paid for the shell. So our cost basis is current, current cost versus a nineteen seventies building with an old, you know, the AC units in there are eighteen years old, the lighting is fifty years old, it's totally different product.
Are you familiar with the normal commercial rates for leases? So, the, the, are you familiar with a website called crexi.com, C R E X I?
I'm not.
Okay, so they have commercial leases on there. The low range of what's requested in there would be nine dollars per square foot. And again, for the EDC property, they're asking for half of that amount of four dollars and fifty cents per square foot per year.
That's, you know, it's an older product.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. I would just like to state that I too think that we really need to consider this, I'm like Gary on that. The contract or the agreement here in front of us says that it will end on October thirty-first of 2026. So that's another five years that we could get some lease money for EDC. I realize the concerns that you brought up about the price difference. In his answer to that was due to the age of the building. This is just something that the council needs to decide if it's the best fit for the city, the best thing for our, our town as a whole, that we need to fill those empty spots. But I had another, oh, signage, signage is a concern down there in that area because the, the antique mall, I know they have spoke to me several times about the signage. And I'm not sure, you know, what the city can do to benefit that, to make that better for them. But the, the way that it's situated, that front building, I think he said it was building five, the one that's totally empty, it impedes the vision of this older building that we're talking about. So they really struggle having that vision from the highway to even enhance someone to stop and shop there. Okay, I'm just checking my notes, making sure I'm not missing anything. Okay, if anyone does not have anything any further to state, then we are going to open this item up for a motion.
I would make a motion to finalize and execute a lease agreement with ETRON as written.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, please. Okay, motion passes for one. Next item, the consent agenda item number five, authorize the city manager to prepare bidding documents and publish notice for the sale of fifty-four twelve Kennebunnell Street. I believe this item was one that we decided to postpone and city attorney, is the proper language, postpone or to table the item?
Are you wanting to postpone it to a later time in this meeting or table it until another meeting?
A new meeting.
A new meeting, separate from tonight?
Is that correct?
Yeah, you can do that. You can table it until the next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to, to do that?
Yes, you do have a motion to do that.
To table the item number E five.
Yes, you do.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Cash your vote, please.
Just to be clear, we're asking to table this item, not to authorize the city manager to prepare bidding?
Motion passes. Items for individual consideration, we've already addressed item number one. Item number two, consider approval of a resolution authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue COs to finance the street sidewalk related drainage improvements at various locations in the city and the acquisition of public safety vehicles and equipment.
I'll make a motion to postpone that until our next meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, and could I also add to that to, to include item number four, to consider authorizing city manager to enter into a professional, professional service agreement to postpone both of those items two and four?
Do you agree to that, Jan?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Jan Joplin made a motion to postpone those two items being F two and F four. And Councilmember Julie Jacobson, second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Motion passed. Item number three, consider approval of a resolution amending the city of Kennebunnell purchasing policy. Councilmember Joplin, I believe you requested this item maybe on the agenda from last month.
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the city manager's spending limit from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment on this. I know that this has been back and forth before. I personally don't have a problem with the fifty thousand dollar threshold. That's norm for what I've been around. I used to work for the city of Lake Worth and that's exactly the threshold that they have, that they hold their city manager accountable to. I think that's maybe more of the issue that some people may have had, not necessarily the dollar amount, but that the, the trustworthiness near, there for some wasn't a real comfort level. And there wasn't really that many, I think there were three items that actually fell between that threshold, between the twenty-five thousand and the fifty thousand, that it would even affect anyway. So you could look at it two ways, well, why bring everything to council for approval that, that a city manager could just go ahead and move forward with? But then the other part of that is, well, if I'm not hearing about it, then council feels like they need, need to know about it. So that's just my little two cents, so we can move forward with the vote now.
Just thank you for clarifying and adding to that, I do appreciate that because it is, that, that is important piece of.
Thank you.
Jan, did you originate the motion?
Yes.
Motion passes for one. Next item is to authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize and execute a contract of sale for a thirteen acre EDC-owned property on Linda Road known as block one, A two, block one of the Harris Corporation addition. At this time, let's see. This is harder to do than you realize.
You're doing a really good job, you're really doing good.
I was trying to see, originated by Melissa Daly, correct? Would you like to come forward and? We're going to hear from staff first and then I will recognize the people that requested to speak.
Good evening. So this is concerning a thirteen acre property on Linda Road. It's at the corner of Linda and Gale. The EDC has owned this property since about 2012. And we have worked with the EDC over the last couple of years to try and work on a solution to develop the property, to seek a developer to, to do something with this vacant property. This is the site, as you can even see from the aerial, it's a very challenging site from a topographic standpoint. It's basically on a large hill. And so that has created some challenges to find a developer that can make this work. Just a little bit of background, the property was appraised for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in 2014. The EDC purchased the property in 2014 and the water fund paid a hundred and seventy-one thousand, one forty-eight for the property. The offer that we currently have is for two hundred thousand dollars. If the council were to approve this, we would recommend that the hundred and seventy-one thousand be provided back to that water fund. I don't, I don't know that any of you were on the council at the time, but, or Lynda, you may have been, but we worked with a company called Compressed Air who was looking to relocate from Grand Prairie. This was a four million dollar investment, contributing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Linda Road. The city would provide the land at no cost, there was a tax abatement involved. That deal was approved, but Compressed Air ended up finding a better site for them, essentially a, a flat site. The cost, as I mentioned, for the topography and leveling it was very significant. So they ended up backing out of that. So we then began to work with Mark Watson, which you may be familiar with, who was looking to stay in Kennebunnell but needed to expand. He again said the land was too challenging to develop because of the topography cost to level the land. So we've been working, most recently with MKP Development, which is Adelaide Pennington, which some of you may be familiar with, have done, he's done multiple developments in Kennebunnell. So MKP is proposing a development called Americana Village. This is a twenty million dollar investment. He's proposing two hundred thousand dollars payment for the land, no other incentives or abatements or anything like that. He's proposing approximately ninety-eight residential lots, although that could vary specifically, it could go down somewhat as the, if this moves forward, as the engineering takes place, there could be a drainage, retention ponds for drainage and that sort of thing, they can change that. Thirty to forty-two foot with lots, single-family homes. In addition to that, he's also proposing some townhomes. And I'm, if it's okay, hopefully he can come up and present his concept in a little more detail. In addition, he's proposing a seventeen thousand square foot of office warehouse space. That would be located adjacent to the industrial use next door, which I believe is Martin Enterprises. And this would require zoning change to neighborhood village. But along with that, the contract before you this evening has requirements for the developer, that the developer would begin construction within twelve months. Or if not, the EDC could exercise its ability to purchase the property back. And he would construct a combination of one-story office warehouse building and residential on the site. As I mentioned, the commercial development would be located along the western edge. And the residential portion would be a minimum of seventy percent single-family homes, that's single-family detached homes, no higher than two-story. I think most or perhaps all of them would be one-story. And the remainder be townhomes of no higher than two-story. The, the developer could choose to do a hundred percent single-family. So the concept, just quickly, and I think he's going to go into this in more detail, are, is based on the nineteen twenties Sears Craftsman bungalows, they have front porches, they're on pier and beam. I think what's interesting about this is these homes were built back in the twenties, there were about seventy thousand of them built and about seventy percent of them still stand today, mostly in historic neighborhoods. And these are some of the actual photos from that time. These are some of the homes that actually still stand today. So these are well-built homes with architectural value that people desire. So this is the layout that he's proposing. The office is, is on the left-hand side here. The single-family is kind of the lighter yellow with the townhomes in red. And I'll let him talk about that in a little more depth. So this is a rendering of what it would look like. Alley served in the rear with green space in the front. And these are some of the images of the homes. And I'm going through this kind of quickly because I think he's going to present this. So in summary, as I mentioned, the contract is for two hundred thousand dollars for the land. The TAD valuation is a hundred and forty-seven, five eighty-one. As I mentioned, the appraisal of one sixty-nine K, it's a little bit dated from 2014. Six hundred thousand dollars is the cost for the topographic work before you ever start to build. The city, of course, receives the investment with the new offices, approximately two hundred and, two hundred and fifty residents, which I think is very important for this side of town, in particular for town center and attracting some retail west of Kennebunnell Parkway. You need rooftops to do that. Approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars per year to the city in property taxes, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand to the Kennebunnell ISD. Of course, sales tax from the office uses their, office uses their jobs in the commercial portion. And these are the estimated impact fees. You can, I divided it out into residential and office. The total, about, I think it was five hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand for roadway water and wastewater. And then, of course, there's a park dedication fee. So I wanted to just touch on, this is the future transportation plan. I know there was a lot of concern expressed about the capacity of the roads. This, where my mouse is, is actually Linda Road. So this is the future transportation plan that shows the connection from Little School Road, which is here, coming down across the Parkway and over to what would be Linda Road. This is a concept, so it doesn't align with Linda Road, but the concept should be that the Linda Road would go through and at some point, and that would be determined by the developments that would occur, connect to that bridge across to Little School Road. This would essentially not only help this development, but other developments, particularly the drag strip property to the east. So here is Linda Road, this is the side of the development we're discussing tonight. And this is the drag strip property, which is under contract currently, under a contingent contract. The plan is to develop single-family homes. So if the improvements could be made on Linda Road, on this section, this developer and the drag strip would put that through and continue that over at their expense to New Hope. So the design, sixty percent design has been done on Linda Road. I know some of you have seen this, we've been talking about this actually for a number of years. And this is one of the two designs that was done for that road, to widen it, to create a median. And this is the, these are the estimates. So mainly what I wanted to point out here, I know this isn't an agenda item on Linda Road, but it's relevant to this development, was that the impact fees for this development alone are five hundred and forty-three thousand, four sixty-two. Now that includes roadway. Now that includes roadway water and wastewater, but Linda Road, the plans for Linda Road are to replace the water and sewer lines that are under Linda Road, because I believe, as I understand, they're clay lines. So this kind of lines out, so you can see the costs on the reconstruction of Linda Road. It goes all the way to the end of the current roadway. So for this development, and the costs were not divided out specifically to this property line, but you can kind of get some idea, a great deal of the costs here on this sort of red section are improvements to the Dick Price intersection, which are very important to have a better intersection there. It can be kind of dangerous, there's, cars sometimes end up in the ditch there, so it's pretty bad. So that's all I have for this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to give us an update on what happened last night? Or would that be more appropriate for after the citizen speak?
Sure, we held a neighborhood meeting to try and get information to the residents in the area. There were about 20 people that attended. I think it was a good meeting. Mr. Pennington presented the plan for the development. And there were questions about the roads and whether the roads could handle the development and discussion around that. I think there was some, a fair amount of discussion as to whether people want a development at all in this area, in this part of town. So that's kind of a high-level overview.
Would you say that the majority were for it or against it?
I don't know, there were several individuals that came up to me individually and said that they supported it, but didn't speak at the meeting. So I don't, I don't know what the numbers are.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions myself. Right now, you're supporting an NV zoning for Neighborhood Village. Why wouldn't it be applicable to put an R3 and R2 there?
First of all, it's a mix of uses. And secondly, the R3, R2 is a 100-foot wide lot, I can't remember the depth, maybe 125 feet. Our 3 is 80 by 100, so that's an 8,000 square foot lot. The proposal on this development doesn't meet any of those requirements.
There's also various types of wildlife that use this area for shelter and food resources. Is there a plan for conservation of that wildlife in the area?
The planning department doesn't handle any of that, so I don't, I don't know how that would work.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Okay, originally I said I was going to call on those that request to speak, but I think it might be better to go ahead and hear from the developer at this point in time. That might spark some additional questioning, you know, questions that you might have. So Melissa, you said he was in here? Okay, thank you. And just for the record, when you get to the mic, please, you know, state your name and address for the record.
Melissa, does Adelaide have a presentation?
He does, it's on the desktop, and I'm trying to figure out how to get to it.
Okay, you need help.
There it is, okay, I found it. Well, it was on the desktop. I mean, I can go grab it.
Honestly, I think your presentation showed all the slides I had.
Let me, let me pull it up, Dan. Sorry, I'm figuring this out. Okay. So let me just pull up. This is probably what we want, their site plan.
That's probably the place to leave it.
Where did it go? What is that? Okay.
Adventures in Zoom.
I don't, I don't know how to get rid of this thing. Okay, hopefully that'll work.
Right.
Counsel, my name's Adelaide Pennington. I live in Arlington. I have several investments here in Kennedale. This project, and last night, I think I can speak to a summary of that. A lot of the discussion had to do with issues that weren't isolated to the project. It had to do with roads, how money spent, really an awful lot of city business. I think in general, both from the conversations that took place, as well as body language, I think it was safe to say that most people want nothing to happen on the site. I think that's, you know, a fair assessment of what took place last night. And that's, that's kind of hard to overcome. I would say that what Melissa presented is accurate and factual. The property is extremely difficult to develop, and to make the economics of it work, it needs the density that is on the concept plan. So the, not to be obstinate about it, but, but any drastic change in density would negate my interest in the property. I think at this point, unless, I think I'm better answering questions than I am redoing this presentation. That's a waste of your time.
Okay, I would like to open up any questions from council. Councilmember Jan Joplin, do you have any questions?
I'd actually like to, would it be okay to hear from the public first?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Joe Palmer. You're good? Okay. Let's go to the next person. Kelly Anderson. Please come forward and state your name clearly in the mic, please.
Hello, my name is Kelly Anderson. I was born and raised here in Kennedale, Texas. I am a graduate of the class of 2006. I believe I was in Mayor Johnson's TCC class when I was in high school. So he taught me government and I got a B. I'm not real happy about that. I lived at 407 Gale Drive for 19 years of my life, and I have seen Kennedale change a lot since that time. I think we need to evaluate how much progress we are making so quickly, or how much we are giving up of the character of this city. People who live in this neighborhood don't want a lot of thoroughfare. They don't want a lot of neighbors. They don't want Kennedale to be like Arlington. So I came up with the slogan, "Don't Arlington my Kennedale." The fact that this is a little tiny oasis in the center of what is increasingly becoming a huge, huge cluster, more, more so than it was already, is even more important to me. But there are some things about what's been happening in this city that I don't agree with. The notice that the residents did not get last night is incredibly problematic. And the transparency about these deals, the contracts, you were just discussing a contract. I graduated from Baylor Law, so his B meant nothing. I want to see what the contracts for these deals look like. Why don't we get to look at the contracts for what our city is entering into? Are we doing what's in the best interest of the city? I don't know, because I can't see what we're doing. And that's important when we're trying to attract economic development, but also trying to keep the character of this city alive, in the way that the residents who have been here for years and years and years want it kept alive, as was evidenced by the meeting yesterday, which I also attended. There was very, very vocal opposition to this development, especially because the city of Kennedale has neglected old Kennedale, the residents of old Kennedale, on the wrong side of...
Your time's up, I'm sorry.
I'd like to waive the three-minute rule for her, I'd like to hear the rest of it.
Could you finish that part then, shortly?
Yes.
Thank you.
On the wrong side of Kennedale Parkway, we don't get the same infrastructure that the other side gets, because they have all the new development, all the new houses. We don't want all these new developments, but we want infrastructure. And as the future interest holder on my parents' house in this property, this is important to me. It's important to millennials as much as it is to boomers. And that's who this new neighborhood is marketed for.
Thank you. And just as a side note, there are a lot of times contracts are confidential, especially when they're EDC and dealing with new properties or, you know, stuff like this. So just keep that in mind as well. Next speaker, it says Steve and Judy Anderson. Thank you. Jeff Navarez. You know the drill, just please state your name and address clearly in the mic.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Jeff Navarez, 1009 Estates Drive in Kennedale. I am super excited how well we've been doing with the EDC land, trying to get rid of it. We've sat on these lands for quite a while, and so a lot of the lands that we have are very unusual lands, for example, the corner lot right over here off of Bowen and this lot, for example. What's unfortunate about this is that you don't get a lot of, let's say, the big boys coming in to play with these lots. They want giant stratos陆lands that's easy to maneuver, easy to landscape and to build on. But that's not what's happening in DFW. Unfortunately, we're getting all these people from all these other states coming here very quickly, and a lot of businesses moving the corporate headquarters here, which is moving their employees, and it's happening very quickly. Now, you can't really stop progress, as somebody had just suggested. But what's exciting about these EDC lands we've been selling is that we're attracting developers that are good businessmen, and that's what I'm coming to talk about today, is Mr. Pennington. I've known Mr. Pennington for about 10 years. He's one of those developers that you want to be, want to have interested in Kennedale, just like the builder that bought the last CDC land over here on the corner. Otherwise, you get builders who are brand-new, for example, like the builder that tried to build next to the junior high that this council had denied. Beginning builder, that's not what we want. But local businessman, local people who've already invested in this community and built beautiful properties and proven themselves before to this community that they can build great properties, and wonderful people have moved into these places. That's the kind of people we want to attract here. Now, I was concerned, being at the meeting last night, of what the neighbors were talking about, there's two issues here that, as Mr. Pennington pointed out, it's not his issue, it's our issue. And that's the roads, and that was, there's also some flooding because of what the sand pit did. Now, my suggestion is the compromise here is to allow Mr. Pennington to move forward on this EDC land, which is going to be hard to develop. There's nothing else going there, and I would like to hear anybody's ideas of what could go there. And take these impact fees, fix these people's roads, fix the water that's going to these people's front yards, take these fees and really apply it to this neighborhood, and it really needs. You all will know for the last 10 years that this Linda Road's been on a really long list. Sure, that list has been shorter because of people like you, Ms. Mayor. I suggest we put that to the top. Allow this to move forward, take these impact fees, let's fix the roads, and let's fix their water issue that they're having the flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Chris Evans. Please state your name and address clearly in the mic.
Chris Evans, and I live at 405 Linda Road. And I was also at the meeting last night and heard the presentation, and I have a lot of concerns. I have a lot of concerns with the open transparency, or lack thereof, of the property even being put up for sale, or knowing it was for sale. I also have a problem with the fact that we're talking about 800 to 1,500 square-foot houses and putting nine to 10 of them per acre on the site, when the average lot size of the neighborhood off Linda Road is minimum three-quarters of an acre lot size. We can't handle the infrastructure, the infrastructure already can't handle the minimal traffic that's on Linda Road, and now we're going to talk about quadrupling it? I asked the council, when you invest in something, or when you're doing something, do you put the infrastructure in first, or do you do the building first? The infrastructure has to be there. Not opposed to having the land developed, but it's got to be developed properly and in accordance with what the people in that area want. Nobody from the EDC, or City Council, or City of Kennedale even approached any of the residents on what they'd like to see there. And that's my problem. This is all done backdoor. I didn't know the property was for sale. You won $200,000 for the property, I'll go to the bank tomorrow and get you a check for it. It can happen. Nobody knew it was for sale. And that's my problem. And now we have tiny houses that don't fit what's already existing. They just don't go there. I bought that property for a reason, and that's because I wanted to live in the country but still have somewhat city access. And this development just throws all that out the door. If it votes, if you guys vote to allow this tonight, my property will be put up for sale tomorrow. And I know I'm not the only resident that's thinking the same way. So to me, this is all kind of, really a slap in the face. When we were told last night that if we don't live within 100 feet of the property, we didn't get notice and we don't matter? Come on. That's just not the way, that's not the way it's done. This isn't Arlington, this isn't Dallas, this isn't, you know, we're Kennedale. Let's keep it that way. Not opposed to, not opposed to development. Let's do it right and think it through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Donald Arp. Please state your name clearly in the mic with your address for the record. Thank you.
Okay, Donald Arp, 324 Linda Road. I have several concerns about the development of the property there. One of the things is, is only allowing two car spaces per house in that area, which is going to have 98 homes, that's going to be probably about 200 vehicles entering onto Linda Road. It's only one access point, no other access is out of there. So they're going to have to go all out at Dick Price Road, 200 cars when it's time to take kids to school or go to work, in addition to who's already there. I already have a flooding problem at my property. The water comes across my yard when we get rain, and now you're going to add all this hard-structured surfaces on the top of the hill. Yes, you've said that you'll build retaining ponds, but that's not going to take care of it. You need to have storm drainage, storm sewers, and I didn't see that in the proposal last night. And I didn't see that in the proposal last night. You're proposing to make Linda Road 40 feet wide? That's going to leave me just one car length before I'm already at the edge of the road if you make it that wide. Why do we need it there? You could put it through the power line right away. You could put the road through there, wouldn't have to impact everybody's homes. I will lose almost most of my front yard if you widen Linda Road. And as it exists, with putting these 200 homes here, the present infrastructure won't support it, who's already been said. If there's people come there and you have visitors and you got two car places, where are they going to park? If you have a teenager or two teenagers, you've got four people now, four vehicles, where are they going to park? You're going to probably say, oh, you'll get more taxes out of it. Our taxes have already more than doubled within the last 10 years. Is there going to be a side lock along Linda Road? Last night's meeting wasn't even on the calendar. And like he said, we didn't get any notices about all this going on. You need to open up, you need to put at least 1,000 feet or so notifications out on stuff. As it is right now, it's just the two people beside you and three across the street. The development is great. It just won't work right where you're wanting to plan to put it. If it was some other where in the city, they had two, three, four access ways to get in there, it worked great. It's a great concept, just not for that spot. And there's also no address on the signage that you have on Linda Road about this property. You didn't put anything on there about it's talking about 13 acres. It just says you want to rezone a lot. A lot to me is only like, you know, 50 by 100 or something like that. And impact fees, if you do go through this, it needs to go in this area and not somewhere else. We've got flooding issues. I know my time's up. We got flooding issues. If you do go through this, the impact fee needs to go in that area and nowhere else. And I would like to see a map of all the EDC land that they own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Redwan Jabri. I may have mispronounced that, I'm sorry. I apologize if I did. Okay, thank you. You used to own a home there, didn't you? Mr. Jabri, you used to own a home there in the Gay Daughters edition. You still do, okay, thank you. I remember when I worked here, so I remember the name. Okay, the next speaker is Koby Cowan. Please state your name and address in the mic clearly. Thank you.
My name is Koby Cowan, I live at 329 Linda. Over, I moved here in 2006, and over the years, I've seen a lot of progress in Kennedale. But the one thing I haven't seen is our neighborhood touched. It's been neglected for years. It's nothing, nothing ever happens there. And we've got potholes that you park a car in next to our house, and it's been neglected. My neighbors have said just about everything else I wanted to say, but I do want to say that the, excuse me, there's a family of gray foxes in this property that I've watched grow. I don't want to see townhomes in my neighborhood that will make the foxes go away. And at the same time, that's going to bring in a younger generation, they're going to party more, there's going to be more traffic. I don't know if y'all have driven down Dick Price, but Dick Price is a death trap if you're walking. And then you take, you take just how bad we've been neglected and the flooding and everything else. I just don't see this money being allotted for the right thing, but this is not the right neighborhood for this. It's, it's not, it's not. And on top of that, it's, I've got four other neighbors that were supposed to be here tonight, but they didn't make it tonight because they got a letter saying this has been postponed till next month. And it, so they couldn't make it because it's already been rescheduled two or three times. I just don't like how it's just trying to be shoved in on us because I promise you, every single neighbor in that neighborhood would come up here and say something if there was enough time for us to know it was happening. It's just like everything else in Kennedale. It just seems like we see progress, but every time there's progress, that money doesn't ever come to our neighborhood. So now we have to have something to put in our neighborhood that we don't want to have our streets fixed? I mean, Melissa informed us last night that we need this to happen so they can have the money to fix the street. Well, best I could tell, most cities, that's what your property tax does. And our street has never been touched since we've been there. It's not been touched. Then you're right, that intersection of Dick Price and Linda is dangerous. It's very dangerous. And the traffic is getting so bad already, it's borderline needing a stoplight. So y'all want to add all this in? And you can say, yeah, well, we're doing all this. You put the infrastructure in first. You don't, you don't just start building crap so you can get money. And then where's that money going to go? No guarantee it's going to go to us. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Julie, and I'm having problems, I'm sorry, reading. Mitchell, okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Julie Mitchell, and I live at 517 Linda Road. Everybody's pretty much said exactly what I was thinking, but I did want to add that, again, the infrastructure is the problem. And right now, we have grandkids right next door to me. I have to constantly watch when they're outside playing that they don't get run over. Sometimes you can't get out from Linda Road onto Dick Price. You might sit there five, six minutes before you can turn right or turn left. It's that bad. I think that, again, going back to what everybody else said, infrastructure is important. We're not against, I'm not against development. My idea is you take the 13 acres and you put two acre home sites on there and sell some houses for 450 to 550,000. And people can say, well, your house isn't worth that. No, but you could still make it where it's homey and comfortable, where people fit. And people would have that feeling of being out in the country, but yet close to the city. And it's a win-win for that person. We built it out there for that same reason. We, my husband wanted to be close to his business in town, but yet we wanted to have the feel for the country. So we had a little bit of both. And that's what you sell it on. You don't sell it on, hey, does somebody, please pick us, pick me? You know, you need to sell it on what you've got to offer there. And I think that you could offer it to a developer that would build beautiful custom homes in there. And again, on at least an acre. And I think there's developers we could approach with that. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. John Havalley. And Mr. Havalley, on your form, it says other items, but I'm not sure which items you're wanting to speak on.
That's fine. I, the way I stated, I agree, but let me address.
Thank you.
You all can hear me well.
And state your name and address, please.
The clock already started. My name is John Havalley, 418 Coker Valley Drive, living over there for over 25 years. I see exercise in these points I need to point out. Lack of accountability, disorganization, no cohesive process, no transparency, no continuity, and independent functions of given authorities. Let me point these things out. Number one, we have our city manager who doesn't even live on this city and has no interest in my city. I'm going to make that straight and clear on behalf of my citizens of the city. He's given authority here to the city manager, all those items E and F, items E and F, consider approval of resolution. Consider approval of resolution amending. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, yes. The city manager is given all this authority. Authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter. Consider approval of resolution, city manager. Authorize city manager to negotiate. So what is happening in this process? You have a city manager, and then you have Melissa, and I didn't want to point her name because I don't know her exact position. And then you bring it to the city, you bring investor in, you bring a landowner buying, you have the city council members sitting, and you have citizens pointing out issues. How disorganized can it be? Let me suggest, first, I'm glad that we have a good composition of city council members who've asked some very valid questions. The EDC is running on its own. It needs to be held accountable by rules set by the city council. The city manager is running on his own. He needs to be held accountable by rules developed by the city council in consideration with every citizen of this city. Why does this two entities especially run on their own and then bring a program to us and bring all confusion? There is no reason to keep citizens out of this whole process. Example, fact, behind my house is Mrs. Coker Valley's property. I don't know what's coming in there. You know how I found that out about five years ago or four years ago? A little advertisement in the Fort Worth newspaper. And a good friend of mine pointed that out. I went and distributed to all the neighbors who are bidding to that property to Mrs. Coker's Valley. What? Are you to take the blame? Take it. Is the mayor to take the blame? He needs to take it. If the city manager needs to take the blame, he needs to take it. There needs to be responsibility here. And the city council needs to authorize a process so there is continuity when new city council members come in. It's time to break this bond and chain on us. You've seen the complaints of us, and it needs to stop. Bring the citizens into the process. Hold the city manager accountable. Hold whoever, Melissa accountable. Her processes are broken. They're totally broken. You bring an investor here, you bring somebody with the land ownership among the city council members who are questioning all these 50 different questions? Where's the money 10 years ago? Old building. Please accept this position and take it. Don't just hear us. I'll come and participate in your committees. I'm sure there's a lot of citizens that will sit and participate. Let's get organized.
Thank you, Mr. Havalley. Okay, just to make sure I'm not missing anyone, anyone else out there that submitted a form in time that I might have overlooked? Okay, none? Okay, we've heard from staff and the developer and the speakers, the citizens in the audience. And now we are going to hear from council members. If you have questions, we'll start with you, Councilmember Jan Joplin.
I do not have any questions.
No questions, but got some comments. My entertainment at this time? So I've listened to everybody here and all valid complaints. And I'll promise you one thing, there's going to be a lot of transparency from this point forward. I can tell you that. And that was my number one gripe too. That's why I ran for city council, I got elected. And I love the fact that we've had this discussion here tonight. I love the fact that we had it last night, it was awesome. We want to have more. We want to have a business meeting. We want the business owners in the city to come forward. We want to see what we can do to help them be more prosperous. And when we can make our businesses more prosperous, we can actually lower the property taxes for you guys. And that's what our goal is going to be, I promise you that. So the one thing that I'd like to point out is how backwards this process right here is. They didn't get it on the agenda in time for it to go to P and Z. So it came straight to the city council, and they're saying, okay, you approve this. And if you do, then everything goes forth without any more discussion. There's no more discussion. Because if we approve this and he buys the property, guess what? We have to do it so we're held accountable. So the process is completely backwards. It should have stopped. It should have went back through the process, should have went to P and Z, let them discuss it. Then it should have came to the council. And you got to ask staff. And that's what we're talking about right now, is the same thing. It should have went to P and Z. They didn't get it posted in time is what we were told. I don't really know the whole story. So, but those are the things that we're going to address. I mean, those are the things that need to be addressed. And that's what we're going to do as your council. We're your council. So the one thing I want to tell you about the infrastructure, the road, okay? So a couple of months ago, we got this updated total project cost of roads, right? And it's just a few roads. Valley lane erosion mitigation and repair. It was $1.3 million two months ago. We got an update on it just right here. You see all this paperwork, right? It's 1.8 million now. It went up 500,000. Kennedale sublet realignment was 594,000. Now it's 9,634,000. And the list just goes on and on and on. So when we're talking about getting 500,000 to go out there from this developer and fix Linda Road, which is an estimated cost of at least $2 million, by the time he starts this project a year from now, how much is it going to be? If these other projects went up that much, how much is Linda Road going to be? 20 million? 14 million? How much is it going to be? And where's the money going to come from to do it? It's not going to come from the $500,000. So I'm telling you guys, we're here for you. We're here to help. Mr. Pennington, to you, this is a great concept. I love it. I think it's awesome. I don't know that it fits right there on that piece of property like Mr. Arp said because of not due to you, not due to anything that you're going to do or not going to do. It's due to the lack of money that's going to make Linda Road a thoroughfare, that where it can go all the way through. All these houses are going to dump out on that one spot, Dick Price Road. And I just can't agree with that. I just can't see that. I don't have a vote. I live on Linda Road and I don't have a vote tonight. Julie doesn't either. But we're all in agree with you, I think. Yeah, we're going to find out here in a minute when we vote on this. But I'm just going to tell you that I'm proud of you guys for coming up here and standing up for your rights. This is your city. You do pay the taxes. It's all about you, and we want to represent you. I mean, I know I do. So I just want to say thank you guys for coming up here and voicing your opinion.
Mayor, can I? I didn't have any questions, but I do have comments. So can I go ahead and make a comment? Can I do that?
Go ahead.
Rather than wait till later for discussion? So I live on Hilltop Drive, and right behind me are apartments. So I'm having deja vu about this whole thing with exactly what happened with the apartments. The exact same thing happened with the exception of there wasn't, the city wasn't supporting the developer to where we had a neighborhood meeting. That didn't happen. And I had to recuse my vote also, but I did speak. And the apartments dump right out on the sublet road. The developer promised this, promised that. There were many people, some people in this room that bought into it. Oh, it's going to be great for Kennedale. We're going to have a commer, we're going to have this, we're going to have that. Guess what we have? We don't have that. We have apartments. We have, and they're low income, so like 80% of them are below market. And that's what we're going to have dumping out on sublet road. Y'all, if you drive, I mean, I've lived here 25 years, so you know what sublet road is like anyway. So we're going to have that now with apartments, I think 120 apartments. And the road was never discussed to council. That road was never discussed, the cost it was going to be to realign that road. The developer made a comment that they would take care of the roads. We assumed that meant sublet. I guess what they meant was internally within the apartment complex. And that road, then we found out, well, it was going to cost about 500,000 to straighten the road. And now it's up to 9.6 million. That's where we're at. We can't do that. We've got to make sure that we understand what the return on investment is before we make these decisions on behalf of the citizens. I also, who's the fox guy? Right here? I have baby foxes living in my neighborhood. We thought they were kittens. And I've got baby foxes back there now because of, you know, they've destroyed all that. I've got trash running through my creek right now. So I hear you.
Councilperson Julie Jacobson?
No comment.
Councilmember James Connor?
First and foremost, to the residents on Linda
First and foremost, to the residents on Linda Road, I apologize for the immense pressure that you guys are going through, the negligence that you guys are going through, flooding due to that sand pit. I did go down there earlier today. I did take a look at the plot. There's a lot that I have an issue with this. There is no wildlife conservation in any plan. Staff is going off a comprehensive plan for traffic and streets that was done 10 years ago and is so outdated, it's ridiculous. Right now, we need to listen to our citizens. You pay taxes. That's what, that's why we're here. We need to listen to you more. And I'm so sorry that previous councils haven't. That changes today. I'm here for you. I'm listening to you. And I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. No additional comments?
One more, one more thing. I get going, forget to say everything that I had. So there was a comprehensive, in 2018, council at the time, I was on council. We asked for a comprehensive plan change specifically urban zoning and which our neighborhood village, urban village. And so staff went out and they did these neighborhood surveys and neighborhood presentations to see, you know, to get the citizens' input on what you wanted. I personally feel like the, that the meetings that were presented were, I don't think people felt comfortable speaking. It was like, this is what it's going to look like. This is going to be great. This is going to be good for our city. Don't you love this? You know? And so there were some, there was a survey that was done when it was presented then to council. The numbers were on the survey, it was like one, two, three, four, and five. And they were, in part, the survey was manipulated, the data was manipulated, like three and four were flipped and I have the documents on that. But the biggest thing to me was the, it was put together like every comments that were made and what you wanted to see more of, what you wanted to see less of. And very clearly, so this was just 2018, what you wanted to see less of was small lots, small homes, apartments, and this is in regards to this particular development, less housing, small lot subdivisions. So we have this information here and it wasn't, I don't understand why we didn't, weren't able to listen then, but we're listening now.
Okay. No, did you have another comment? Okay.
I tend to agree with Gary about the development probably not being that the best place for it. There are a lot of infrastructure problems in that area. We all know them. We've already talked about them all. The roads, the drainage, the flooding. It's a 13 acre piece of property. Lot of stuff can be done in 13 acres. You know, you can replat that and let the front part that faces the west side, that faces Dick Price, let that go ahead and be some type of business. And let the bigger portion of that property be for maybe our three residential homes. There's plenty of space there. It's, as Mr. Pennington stated though, that's not his desire and that's understandable. But there's other locations too to do that. I need to remind council that this item is for the authorization for the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute a contract of sale. It has nothing to do with the zoning, not the zoning change right now, but in the contract it does state that. And I guess I should also ask for advice as far as any type of abstentions or any type of forms that the city secretary may need on file for those that cannot vote?
I think that's already been done.
For the council and not another board?
Correct.
Okay. You have that?
Do I have abstention forms? Yes.
Or at least the acknowledgement and writing?
I think you do. City Secretary's office has one for Ms. Jacobson, I know.
Okay.
I don't know about Mr. Mitchell.
I didn't sign one, but I'm going to abstain.
You can get that form after the meeting. Okay? Okay, so with that being said, I'm going to, if no one else has any comments, yes, sir. Go ahead. Yes, sir, you may.
For those that were here last night, the one thing that I hope you remember is I don't want to be where I'm not wanted. So I would like to respectfully ask that this item be removed, that the contract be terminated, and that there's no further rights or obligations for any party. I don't choose to be there. So I don't know if I need to do any more than that, but
Okay.
Because you're about to make a motion and I'm just, you know.
I will ask our city attorney. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If the council wants to make a motion to deny, they can do that. You can do that too. And take no action.
Okay, then do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion to deny and terminate the contract.
A second. Any further discussion? Okay, ready for a vote? You think you did it wrong? Okay, the motion passed with a 302 to deny. Is there confusion? City Secretary, you have that correct on the record?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
The motion was to deny.
Motion was to deny and it did pass to deny. Okay. So let's go to the next item. Ms. Rose, may we take a break? Yes. Thank you. Let's take a 10 minute.
I was killed here now.
My grandmother.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Sure, sure. I drive over once while. Okay, yeah, yeah, sounds good. I didn't get to go outside. I didn't get to go outside. I don't look a day over six. I want it. These are guys.
Yeah, I got that one.
Yes.
Okay, we're getting ready to start again. Okay, it's nine forty-four, we're gonna re-adjourn here. Or restart, sorry. With item number F six authorize the city manager to negotiate finalize and execute the fifth amendment to the lease purchase agreement for eleven seventy East Kennedale Parkway Reds Roadhouse. And this has a city manager's name on there for for the staff, so I am going to jump right in and ask for comments from the city council. We'll start this side first. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on spot there. You don't have anything, no comments at this? Okay. This is for the fifth amendment for the lease purchase agreement.
Mayor, would you like me to start over here while he finds it, or is he good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so just to kind of give you a brief summary of what this is, this is Reds Roadhouse. And is there any know Reds? Can you hear me? Okay, Reds Roadhouse. This land is, it's a little bit complicated because it's owned by, it was owned by Bloxum. Bloxum gave the land to the EDC to use for rent. And if and when the land is sold, the land goes, the Bloxum gets the the funds. And so what that means is the EDC owns the land, so it's not on the tax appraisal. That's all EDC or city land, it's not on tax appraisal, so it's not collecting tax revenue. So this was set up with the EDC, this is an EDC agreement. And it started in several years ago. Twenty twelve, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. It was originally, and so it was signed for a certain number of years with a purchase option for Mr. Pennington to purchase the property for two fifty? Two seventy-five? Two seventy-five. So over the years, the EDC has rolled, the rent started out at twelve hundred a month. Started increasing seventeen, it's up to twenty-five hundred, it's been at twenty-five hundred for the last couple of years, two or three years, something like that. So rather than Mr. Pennington optioning to purchase it at this time, he's asked for another extension on it. So that's kind of where we're at. And that's what's being presented to us is to authorize a city manager to negotiate or this lease purchase, that's what this is, that's what's before us today. So my concerns are with the EDC, it has been several years, so it's not the first year, the second year, the third year, the fourth year, this is our fifth amendment. And with the land not being on the tax roll. I'm thinking now at the time with where we're at, that it's the time for us to maybe ask Mr. Pennington to take the option and purchase the property. So that we can get it on the tax roll, I do understand that the calculation of what's been paid the last at least three years compared to what the city would receive in taxes is about the same, but that doesn't include KISD income, you know, or their taxes as well. So I would like to see if that's where I'm at at this time is wanting the property to to get on the tax rolls. So I'll just end it there.
Would you like to go now?
I guess I just have a question, Mr. Pennington, are you able to purchase it at this time, or would you be willing to, or, I mean, I'd like to hear your thoughts on the process.
Oh, sorry. I would ask if it can be extended, I think it expires in November, or remember, either December. And then just stipulated there would be no other extensions. I'm prepared to close it. And put it back on the tax roll. I'd rather it not have to close by Friday, but you know, if it's gonna be extended this time, I think it will expire the end of November, and between now and then, you know, I'll purchase it.
Excellent. Yes, the date on it was twenty-eleven, that's when it started.
It opened in twelve.
Yeah, I went to the opening. It was wonderful, had a good time.
So just to be clear, is my understanding that the the extension had already expired in November of twenty twenty? Okay, just want to make sure.
I'm in agreeance with Jan, I figure, I think it's time that it be added to the tax rolls. If there is an, you know, purchase or an option to buy. I think that we need to start looking into that and not having another extension. I mean, looking at everything that I have that I looked at, you know, that I looked up about this property. That's a large lot, it's two acres land. I think it's time that we not extend anymore and have that option to buy exercised.
So what you're saying is to take you out to November and then you would purchase?
Absolutely. Or before.
Or before.
May I ask, why didn't you do that last year?
You made the point, the tax, the rent and the tax is about the same. It was just an economic decision. I'm sorry. The the rent and what would be property tax was about the same. So you know, that was the, that was the reason. But it's a push and this is time to get, you know, get it gone.
Right, and Ms. Joplin, could you just, my understanding was the taxes you would pay to the city would be the same, but in addition, you would then start paying the KISD taxes that you are not currently paying.
Well, as soon as I close it, you know, I'm paying the entire TAD tax. KISD and all of it, the total property tax just based on three percent of its current appraised value is approximately the same as the total yearly rent.
Mr. Pennington, when did you close Reds Roadhouse?
It's not closed.
It's not closed?
Oh, no. I opened a barbecue restaurant and I did it within thirty days of COVID. And so we closed that. But, and COVID hurt the event business, but it's an event center only. It's not open to the public, it's just simply weddings, quinceaneras.
My question is, I understand that you just said it's an event center, why don't you open it up as a public restaurant instead?
I lost a fortune.
I understand, COVID nineteen did hit a lot of business.
Well, you know, I, when it was open, it was open in the beginning as a nightclub and a restaurant, and it stayed that way for, I don't know, three or four years. It just couldn't survive. For all the reasons that people were talking about, you know. It's just, it's a big operation and it couldn't break even, it never broke even, as a matter of fact.
It's a little scary.
Very scary.
I understand. So due to COVID nineteen, it was shut down, and unfortunately, I'm sure you lost a ton of, you know, events as well during that timeframe. Extending the contract to November. Or, you know.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, absolutely.
What's to say that during, after that contract expires, we're not here for a sixth time?
We're not here for what?
A sixth time.
Yeah, well, that's what he's saying is that he'll purchase it either by then or before, and I think that he will.
You could put it in the, in the extension. You know, that there won't be any further extensions, and if it's not, I'll be in default.
Well, and since we've been on, I assume we're on a month-to-month, I assume that was part of the lease you originally signed. Why not just continue month-to-month until you're able to purchase the building? Or pardon me, I know you own the building, I mean to say, till you're able to purchase the land.
Ask me that again.
Why not just continue doing a month-to-month lease, as I assume it is in the contract that you signed? Instead of extending the contract all the way out to November, you could just do a month-to-month lease until you're able to finalize the purchase of the land.
Well, the land and the building are together.
Well, so the land is owned by EDC, but my understanding is you own the building.
The city owns, EDC owns the building and the land.
Well, that might be news to the EDC.
I don't. I don't know, I've never known anything about that.
I mean, the improvements, once they were built, become part of the real property. But you know, whatever we're selling to him is gonna be, is going to be the real property and the building.
Yeah, I'd put over a million in it. So clearly, you know, I'm not gonna let it default, if you, I would rather it be November. But if it's sixty days, if it's thirty days, I'll close it. There's title work, there's things that have to be done, so it can't be overnight, which the extension, by the way, that requested, you know, come into the city. It just dropped, and I dropped from my radar, and I guess it did the cities as well. As soon as it raised back up, you know, is when this contract was, or the extension was requested.
So if we were to agree to an extension, would you agree to pay more in rent?
The higher you make it, the quicker I'll close it.
Okay, so is that something, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, you know. Sure.
Okay, so is that something that you could renegotiate with the city manager's office?
Let me try to make this easier then. Give me sixty days and I'll close it for cash, and you won't have to worry about anything, I'll pay the next two months rent in advance and close it in sixty days. Is that something that you think you can support?
I would actually not be in support of that, Mr. Pennington, I don't want that to close. Any businesses within the city limits of Kennedale do need to stay open so that our citizens can enjoy them. I don't want your business to go away.
And I used to, but I.
He's not talking about closing the business.
Close on the property, okay. I, good, because I had that completely wrong for a second.
That wasn't.
I don't know, we need to keep our businesses here, we need to have our citizens enjoy them.
I'm not going anywhere.
I would be in agreement to that, absolutely.
I'm fine with that.
I think I'd be in agreement for that as well.
So if nobody has any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to accept Mr. Pennington's agreement. Could you state it again, Mr. Pennington, for the record?
Whatever sixty days from now is would be the extended date that I'll close it on or before that. Hey, the next two months, in advance to the EDC. And you can put language in there that says that if I don't, then you just got a million five building.
Okay, thank you.
You're pretty sure I'll do it. All right, what's the motion then?
It's a motion to accept Mr. Pennington's offer to finalize the sale within the next sixty days to go ahead and make the. It's a motion to accept Mr. Pennington's offer to finalize the sale within the next 60 days to go ahead and make the the two last payments to the EDC.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion?
Also, if there are any outstanding fees that's unpaid, those probably need to be included with that as well.
Yeah, I don't know what other fees there would be.
Are you saying back rent?
What's that?
That what you mean, like back rent or something?
Yes.
I think he's been paying rent.
Okay, I'm not sure, but we can.
There you go.
We could provide the council with the ledger of what's behind.
So yeah, you would need to get current plus two months. Yeah.
Okay. Fiscal year 20. The EDC had a meeting. I don't remember the day it was, but they mentioned when COVID happened, giving the businesses an opportunity to delay payment for three months. So that may that may be included within those four months that were missing, but there are four months missing for fiscal year 20.
Make a motion to amend that emotion somewhat to make sure all back fees are paid?
I do. I would make a motion to amend my previous motion to make sure all back fees and rent are paid.
Do I have a second on the amendment to the motion?
Second.
Now for the vote on the motion, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, I guess, because we don't have the motion up there for the amendment. All right. And now, we got that on there, then the original motion, which has been amended. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, then please enter your votes.
Could you just clarify for me? We we raised our hand for the vote of the oral motion I just made, and now we're voting for what?
For the actual final amended motion that you originally made.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was getting a little bit up there. Complicated. I think we got it. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Hold a public hearing regarding amendments to land use assumptions, capital improvements, and ordinance of both water wastewater and roadway impact fees. So I think we've got a presentation, don't we, Larry? From Freezer Nichols?
Yes.
Yeah, Christine Jacobson said that you were her A-team, so make sure that you do a good job.
Mayor, members of city council, the staff portion of public hearing tonight will be a presentation of the impact fee study by Freezer Nichols. The study, the presentation, and the citizen, excuse me, the capital improvement advisory committee recommendation letter and the ordinances you will consider after the public hearing were emailed to you prior to the meeting for your review. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at those. I would like to take this time to introduce Mr. Mazen Kawasmi of Freezer Nichols. Can introduce him and his himself and his colleagues and start the presentation.
Thank you, mayor and council. Okay. All right. Thank you, mayor and council. Today, we're going to present to you guys on the results of the roadway, water, and wastewater impact fee update. This is a public hearing for impact fees, land use assumptions, capital improvement projects, and the impact fee ordinance. The scope of the project included the items that you see here, where we identified service areas for water, wastewater, and roadways, where we then looked at land use assumptions to see what the tenure growth would be in addition to converting those into service units. We looked at existing capacity on the roadway, infrastructure, water infrastructure, and the wastewater. And we looked at what the usage is as long as well as the deficiencies. We had to project out the demands. We looked at the CIP and again, developed a cost per service unit calculation. All this here is prescribed by Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code, which is addressed in the report that was provided to you. One thing I do want to mention is that it is a process that we did include the capital improvement advisory committee, which consists of the PNZ plus an ad hoc member of the ETJ. So we've had two meetings with the CAC where we looked at the land use assumptions. We talked about the second meeting, the CIP, which they reviewed the technical approach, the technical details, and approved. Today here, we're at the public hearing, looking for council approval on the updated impact fee ordinance. As Larry mentioned, a recommendation letter by the CAC committee has been provided to you guys. So just real quick, what is an impact fee calculation, how it works? So we look at the capital improvement projects, what's eligible for growth as the impact fee CIP cost divided by the 10-year increase in service units. Impact fees, it's not a tax. It's not something that an existing homeowner would pay. It is growth paying for growth. It's a funding mechanism to where we can pay for growth coming to the city. So you really have two funding mechanisms on the water and wastewater side. You could either continue to raise rates or you can supplement growth by charging an impact fee. It's a one-time fee that a developer pays for developing in the city. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Franco. He's going to walk you through the technical details of the study and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mazen, mayor and council. Good evening. Just want to walk through some of the technical aspects of this project that we undertook. First off, we're looking at defining the amount of growth for Kennedale. We did that using different sources of population, population projection sources and employment. We looked at information from the North Central Texas Council of Governments, the NCT COG, as well as the U.S. Census Bureau information. We also had a lot of discussion with city staff on some of these near-term developments. And we identified a 3.5% growth rate over a 10-year period of population growth for the city of Kennedale. Also wanted to look at, on the non-residential side, how are we growing from a employment projection? We have plenty of figures in our study report that show the distribution of population and non-residential employment throughout the city of Kennedale using the NCT COG traffic survey zones. And so we're looking at a 2020 population number of 7,670 in 10 years' time. If we maintain that 3.5% growth rate steady over 10 years, that comes out to be just over 10,000 people in 2030. And same thing on the employment, the non-residential side, having a total employment of 4,612 employees that work in the city of Kennedale, moving up to about 5,800 in the 10-year time period. Service areas, the impact fee laws and rules dictate that water and wastewater impact fee service areas can be within your city limits and your ETJ. For roadway service areas, those are confined just to projects that are in city limits. So you have a service area that is going to contain actual impact fee eligible projects. And the rules and the laws of Chapter 395 state that fees that are collected have to be spent within a certain service area. Talking about the water wastewater impact fee CIP, we had, we've identified projects that are actually existing in the ground as well as proposed projects to meet identified growth. We had a total of 15 projects on the water side. The kind of the figure on the left shows how they're spatially distributed throughout the city. The ones in green are those existing identified projects that I mentioned. And then the ones that are in red are the proposed projects over the next 10-year time period in order to help and meet to accommodate the projected growth.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a list of these projects?
Yes, yes, we do. They're in the study report.
I was trying to look, flip through it real quick to see if I could.
It's not in the presentation packet, but it's in the actual report that was provided ahead of time. But I do have the report here, so I am able to open up and talk about any specific projects. On the on the wastewater collection side, we have a total of 13 projects. And you could see where those are identified. The some of the lower numbers, 1, 2, 3, 4, are really in the northern portion of town. Some of the main trunk sewer lines that provide wastewater service to really the bulk of the city of Kennedale. And moving down to the south to accommodate new growth and development, we had some additional projects that were added to the impact fee CIP list. So this is one part of the the kind of the numerator of the equation to help define what we can charge for an impact fee. The splitting, splitting things out on the water side, we have those existing eligible projects that I mentioned and the future eligible projects. There's a total of about $10.2 million to actually construct the projects entirely. We use, we use our water and sewer models to actually determine, based on the growth over the 10-year time period, what portion of that project's capacity is actually attributable to the growth. If you have a project in 2020 that was being half or 50% utilized by existing existing customers, and then you have a 10-year utilization of, we'll say, 80% of that project's capacity, so you have a 30% increase in capacity utilization due to growth. And so 30% of that total project cost is what becomes the impact fee eligible cost. We also coordinated with city staff on developing some cumulative interest costs that are able for accoutment under the impact fee law. We used a finance cost of a 20-year bond at 3% interest rate. So you have the subtotal cost. So for water is at $3.45 million. The cumulative interest cost of $959,000 makes a total impact fee eligible cost on the water side of $4.4 million. Same thing on the sewer side. We have a $4.6 million eligible impact fee cost with $1.37 million in cumulative interest for a total of $5.89 million. So that's the first half of the numerator of the equation. The second half is the credit. Mazen kind of spoke on it earlier. But Chapter 395 says that the utility is required to provide a credit for growth out, growth-related outstanding debt. And really what that comes down to at the end is you can choose to take that total cost of the 4.4 million and the 5.9 million, you can divide that by two automatically, credit at 50%. Or you can, you have the option of doing a detailed credit analysis methodology to determine if you can collect over that 50% of the total impact fee cost. When we started this project last year, it was the decision made at the time to just automatically cap at the 50% of the maximum allowable impact fee. Kind of the bottom half of the equation, the denominator, is talking about taking our total costs and dividing it by the growth in service units. On the water wastewater side, we are using water meter size is the to determine the number of growth in service units. So we have existing meters in 2020. In 2030, we projected that out based on the different types of growth patterns. So we're looking at increasing in the bottom right there, have an increase of service service unit equivalent growth of 1,628 units. Taking all that together, the the equation, all the different pieces that I talked about, the eligible costs minus the credit divided by the gross and service units, that shows you what is the maximum allowable impact fee that can be charged. And we're assuming this for the kind of the base size meter, basically for a single-family home. What you're looking at is on the water side, having a maximum allowable impact fee of 1,357. And on the sewer side, wastewater of 1,837. Combine those totals, $3,194. Basically, the impact fee that could be charged for a single-family home. Moving over to the roadway side, we have, we did the technical analysis there as well that determined in the service area, which is the city limits of Kennedale, we have a total projected growth in vehicle miles of 2,479 vehicle miles. The CIP, those are the actual projects that are in the impact fee eligible CIP. Their their current or future projected capacity can provide up to 1,000, oh, no, 14,143 vehicle miles. So the basically the projected growth divided by the entire capacity is, over the next 10 years, utilizing 17.5% of the total project capacity. Some of the, some of the, just the technical numbers that show you how we derivate to the final maximum impact fee cost summary. We take the vehicle demand miles and look at, you know, what is being supplied by our by our actual CIP. And you subtract the, you basically subtract column, you start with column one and subtract the capacity minus the utilization and the existing deficiencies that gives you that net capacity that's supplied by the CIP. Then the total cost that has been projected with that 50% credit that I talked about, going from the $44 million down to 22 million. And then we are determining, you know, what is that cost of net capacity supplied? What is needed to meet our existing needs? And then the finally, I've skipped ahead to column 11, the cost that's attributable to new development. You take that total number divided by the projected 10-year growth, that gives you that maximum impact fee number of $1,217 per service unit on the roadway side. So walking through a very sample calculation for a for a development on the roadway, it's a two-step process that we're looking at. Number one, we want to determine what's the number of service unit or vehicle miles that's generated by the development. So you're looking at the number of units times the vehicle mile per unit gives you a total vehicle mile. And then, once you have determined the vehicle miles, you're going to multiply that again by a cost per vehicle mile, and that's going to be based on your land use. There in the actual study report, there are tables that have, I say, 60 to 70 different types of land uses that show you for a single-family home, you have so many vehicle miles. For a general commercial development, you have so many miles for industrial manufacturing. There's all different types of land uses that are in the report that allow you to actually calculate what's going to be due for each different type of development. On the water wastewater side, here, we're just looking at what is the really the number of meters. And each meter has a service unit equivalency to use a national standard meter capacity rates as defined by the American Water Works Association. Multiply that by our determined cost per service unit will tell us our impact fee for the developer. So putting putting that in actual numbers for a single-family dwelling, you know, if we have one single-family home times 1.69 vehicle miles per unit is 1.69 vehicle miles. Multiplying that by the maximum allowable fee of $1,217 gives us an impact fee for one single-family home of $2,056.73. On the water wastewater side, if we put in a 3/4-inch meter, those are those maximum fees that I mentioned in the 1,357 and the $1,837 per service unit. That brings your total impact fees to $5,250.73. Looking at what was done in the 2017, when, or 2016, excuse me, when the impact fees were last adopted, we had a maximum allowable impact fee of 1,487 on the water side. Here, we have actually, the the results of the technical analysis showed that the maximum allowable fee on this on the water side has actually dropped from 1487 down to 1357. On the sewer side, we went from $1,080, made a big jump up to $1,837. And then on the roadway side, the service unit dollars of 1,269 dropped about $50 down to 1,217. The percent of maximum allowable is basically telling, here's what we, you as council, what you can recommend, a certain percentage of the maximum allowable. In the in the 2016, we adopted 100 In the, in the 2016, we adopted 100% for water wastewater and residential roadway rates. And adopted a, basically a percentage for some of the other different types of land uses. 50% for roadway offices, 70% for commercial industrial and 33% for institutional. So this is part of y'all's policymaking decisions to determine where we want, what kind of collection rate and what is that percentage of maximum allowable. So that's really, that's the action that we're going to be looking for today from city council. We did a benchmarking comparison of some local utilities just to see where does Kennedale fall on the spectrum of, are we charging too much? Are we not charging enough? So we provided some sample, sample benchmarking charts that show, you know, where does Kennedale stack up against some of its neighbors? In the, kind of in the, in the middle, just to the right a little bit, you see the current rate of $4,864 that we can charge for a single family residence. If we adopted all the maximum allowable fees, that was, that would jump up to 5,251. Now, Mansfield's a next door neighbor, they charge $6,549 for a single family home for impact fees. Burleson's nearby, they charge $5,900. Fort Worth, 5,447. And Arlington is $1,874. That's for a single family residence, looking at a, basically a 10,000 square foot office building. Same metrics, just looking at what other utilities charge. Kennedale's kind of right in the middle. Frisco's on the high end for about $62,000. And then lastly, for a kind of a light industrial building, just showing a little sample of what these different impact fee rates are. $88,000 is the potential maximum up from 79,000 currently. So those are, that's kind of the summary, the result of the technical analysis and the, the recommendation. The, the letter that was provided to council from the CAC committee does, they do recommend a charging the maximum for the water impact fee, the maximum 50% value of 1,357. The sewer side, the maximum $1,837. And for residential and non residential development, the CAC committee identified the maximum $1,217 impact fee charge. I'll take any questions you all have for the study.
Okay, let's go around the room. James, any questions?
Not specifically. I was looking at the graph and why does Plano play pay zero? Just out of curiosity.
They, they, for lack of a better, they sunsetted their program. They felt that they were close enough to build out to where they didn't want to, they, they didn't have enough growth to basically continue running a program. Everything there's on the, kind of the rehab and renewal side.
And our neighbors, Arlington, why are they so low?
Here again, they're close to build out. They're about 93% built out.
Thank you.
Linda?
I do have one question. On all the graphs that you showed us, except for the last one, I believe, it has the Kennedale current is less than the Kennedale max allowable. Could you explain why it's different on the, the last graph?
Oh, it's, it's different there because of the, it's really the, the land use type of, it's that roadway component. So they're, they're kind of shaded there to, the purple is the roadway and then the blue and the green are the, the water wastewater. The, the, the factors from the tables that are in the, in the report show that for a for an industrial type land use, charging more based on the number of square footage of that type of development. Do you have that? Okay, let's see. Oh. Yeah, the light industrial. The factor. So the factor is higher in the new study versus the old one. That really necessitates why the number is higher. No, I'm backwards. In 2016, per vehicle mile, general light industrial is 1.69 vehicle miles per service unit. And the updated version of the manual that dropped from 169 to 103. And that's why the number in the max allowable is lower for our proposed one versus our current one. Excuse me. I am a water wastewater engineer, not a roadway guy.
Jan, any questions?
I just want to thank you guys for waiting so long. It is now 10:30. And you waited so long. I honestly thought we had postponed this, honestly, in my head. But then when I saw that we had, I'm like, but you got to speak now. You waited so long. And you did a great job. It is a lot of information. The reason I was asking for the list is because, and, and I don't have it. And so I'm just assuming the list that you were presented is how you calculate all this information?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I get, my concern with that is without seeing the list, I don't know. Maybe in the back of my mind, I feel like there's some projects on there that haven't been approved. And if that's the, if that's the case, would that change these fees? Like, let's say there are projects on there that don't get approved.
It, it would, and it does. And that's why by law, if you have a program in place, you're required to update it every five years.
Okay, but it wouldn't update for five years?
You can update it every year if you would like. The, the minimum is five years to account for changes in growth. To account for changes in your CIP. We want to make sure we're trying to use current dollars.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jan, if you want, we could keep the public hearing open and postpone the actual vote until the next meeting if you wanted to take time to take a look at the projects.
Um, how's, how does the rest, how do you guys feel?
Is anybody?
I'm actually pretty comfortable going ahead and voting for it, to be honest with you.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion for, we have two of them here. Ordinance amending Article 2 roadway impact fees of chapter 20. I have a motion for that.
I have too many pieces of paper now in front of me.
James, you want to make your face, first face, full faith motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
All right, I have a second. As for a second, any further discussion? If not. You know, we have people sign up at the beginning of the public hearing and no one signed up before the meeting started. And we did announce you need to sign up. So. Well, Joe, just a reminder that we did announce a need to sign up at the beginning, but we're going to give you your three minutes.
Thank you for being in compliance with the Open Meetings Act.
Oh, you're most welcome.
It's important to be in alignment with state law at all times.
Oh, I agree.
So there's, there's nothing being granted to me out of favor from you. We are.
Well, that's, thank you. But if you're going to speak, speak on it, give us your name, your address and, and then we'll start. Start it all over. So he's ready to go at three minutes.
This can be easy.
That's what we're trying to do. We're going to give you three minutes. Ready? Yeah, they can't hear you. Go.
Is the microphone on?
Joe Palmer, 4017 Sanguine Court, Fort Worth, Texas 76107, representing the Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners. Very grateful for the presentation and very grateful for being in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. It's very important. I would just appeal to city council to consider not going with the maximum. There was a difference in two rates on the industrial, 88,000 on one end and 79,700 some odd on the other end. And I have to think these impact fees will influence a decision of a business on whether or not to come here versus going to another city. We are aggressively committed to making Kennedale a business friendly zone. And that means making things as cheap as possible for businesses to come in and open up shop. And that's the end of my statement. I appreciate your time.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please enter your vote.
I think I messed mine up over here. I'm not getting that sword on here. I think I did that.
You messed it up?
No, I'm all the way back to the beginning.
You okay?
Do I just raise?
You can raise your hand if you want to, if that makes it easier on Gary.
Raise my hand.
Okay. All right.
Good deal. So Gary, that was a vote for yes or?
410. All right. Item two, the water. I think Joe Palmer wants to speak again. You put A and B. Oh. Oh, you're welcome. All right. So do I have a motion? On considering an ordinance amending Article 5 water and wastewater impact fees at chapter 23.
A motion.
Thank you, James. I have a second.
A second.
Any further discussion? Please enter your vote.
One item of discussion.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Oh, James.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
The maximum allotment that I was looking at, I, I do have, you know, a bit of a background in finance. These are a bit expensive, especially for a small city like us. So. I mean, people are going to vote how they vote, but for even a single family home, that's a bit extreme in my book. I mean, it, it might be only like maybe five, six, you know, five, six grand for a single family home. Businesses that they can get up there. With that being said, I, I don't know. I, it, it just seems a little extreme to go for a maximum allotment. That's all.
All right. All right, then please enter your vote. You can raise your hand again, Gary.
Sorry, Gary, is that a yes? I apologize. I'll look into that.
Okay, motion passes 410. All right, the city council is going to reconvene into executive session pursuant to section 551.071 and five, I think 551.071. That's it. Thank you. All right, we're going to reconvene out of executive session. Do I have any motions to make out of executive session?
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to finalize the settlement agreement in regards to the property at 731 East Kennedale Parkway, 733 East Kennedale Parkway and 804 Mansfield Cardinal Road, and to further authorize the mayor to sign that settlement agreement.
I second.
Further discussion? Please raise your hand or please enter your vote. Do we have a vote dinner in there? Okay. All right, just please raise your hand. That'll save us some time. Motion passion. You asked me to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second? Second, any further discussion? There better not be. All those in favor, raise your hand. Go home. Thank you for your hard work. Get out, leave. Go do things. Go have fun.
Yes.
Jesus Christ. Kidding me? Do they normally last as long? Do they normally last as long or? Last month lasted almost a freaking almost until 10:30, 11 o'clock and this one.